We are convening the House Committee on Culture, Arts and International Affairs. Today is Friday, April 19, 2024. It is 10:00 a.m. here in conference room 430. Just first, a few housekeeping items. For those who are on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video turned off until it is your turn to testify. There will be a minute limit, one-minute limit for all testimony. Myself, or my vice chair, if I have to step out, will raise this yellow card when you have 15 minutes left. And at that time, please wrap up your testimony to ensure that there is time for everyone to testify if they wish to do so. We do have session at 11:30, and my goal is to DM by 11:10. If you are testifying, please make sure that... Oh, yeah. If you are testifying on Zoom, please make sure to check the screen for this notification, or we will interrupt you to wrap up. You know, due to the size of this conference room, when you have finished testifying, please exit the room to allow for others to enter and avoid overcrowding. You are welcome to continue viewing the hearing outside on the monitor. Should there be any questions at decision-making times, we will request your entry. All right? First up on the agenda, we have SCR 13 urging the President of the United States and the members of Hawaii's congressional delegation to support an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. First up to testify, we have Laura Hughes. Not present. Asling Kennedy. Not present. Will Carone.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Will Carone, testifying as an individual in strong support of this resolution. Over the last six months, the carnage in Gaza has continued unabated. Our federal government has not listened to the calls of the people, the vast majority of whom support a ceasefire. Even though the president has said that he supports a ceasefire at this point, Israel continues to receive arms and unrestricted funding, and the genocide continues. So it is our position that we want the state government here in Hawaii to help us amplify the call for a ceasefire. You have institutional power that we do not. Your voice carries weight that ours does not. We need your help to please get the federal government to listen to us and call for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Inga Gibson.
Good morning, Chair, committee members. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Inga Gibson, I am wearing a kaffiyah that my mother gave to me that she received from our Gazan family in the 80s. So we have been involved in this issue for many, many years, and really thank the committee for hearing this important measure. I worked with the Senate on this resolution, and they showed the courage necessary because ultimately, history will remember where each of us stood on this day. This is a test of our collective humanity. It takes nothing of us to pass this ceasefire resolution and show that we are the true aloha state, and we stand for justice, for peace, and for compassion. So I urge you, please, to support this measure and support the future of justice and being pono for all that is Hawaii and all that these people are enduring today. So mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have George Hudes. Probably butchering that name. George Hudes, H-U-D-E-S. Not present. Not present. We have Cassandra Chi. Cassandra Chi. Next up, we have Chauncey HH.
In support?
Yeah, yes, sir. Good morning, everybody. First off, I'd just like to acknowledge and thank the work of those that allowed this resolution to make it here today. I know there's been a lot of peaceful resistance and active protests to get it here today, and I just wanted to speak. I'm a humanitarian worker, and we work quite closely with UNRWA and colleagues in Gaza, and I can tell you from experience of working with those colleagues, the only way to ensure that children and citizens of Gaza receive humanitarian aid is a longstanding ceasefire. Over 85% of infrastructure in Gaza has been destroyed. That's up to, I think, $4 billion in its GDP. And I would just like you to use your institutional voice and to urge our federally elected officials to use the influence that the U.S. has over Israel to put an end to the violence in Gaza. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Abby Shites.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Abby Shites, and I stand in strong support of SCR 13. Every year, the United States sends billions of dollars, taxpayer dollars, to Israel to fund their military. Since October 7, we have watched this money be used to kill tens of thousands of civilians, amputate and bury children under rubble, and discriminately bomb hospitals, schools, and places of refuge. Like so many horrific chapters of our history, this is being done in the name of a nation's right to defend itself. But what about the people's right to humanity? I believe every taxpayer is complicit in this genocide and regional violence unfolding in the Middle East. While we plead for pennies on the dollar for education and health care in this country, we continue to send unending weapons and money to Israel. As members of this committee deliberate on this resolution, I urge you to consider the Palestinian people displaced from their land, homes, and communities destroyed, and entire families killed.
Please wrap up your testimony.
Again, I ask, where is this right to humanity? Mahalo for this opportunity to testify in this important measure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bart Damon, support. Wow, not here. That's interesting. Next, we have Nikki Watts in opposition.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and esteemed committee. I first want to say that I am testifying as an individual citizen, and I'm on a vacation day. I'm testifying as the Chair of the Jewish Community Relations Board, and I'm testifying in opposition of the specific language that's being used in the ceasefire bill. The language in the ceasefire bill is very one-sided, and the challenge with looking at this very intense and very colorful situation in a black-and-white, one-sided manner is that it puts one other side in like, in a negative perspective. And what's that that is causing in the way that the the community is coming out is causing a heightened rise of antisemitism here in Hawaii. Since October, we've had over 600% rise in antisemitic acts, and the way that the language is in the ceasefire bill, it's causing that to happen in our community here in Hawaii. So though I'd like to see a ceasefire bill occur, I'd like to see peace, I'd like to see the Palestinians be at peace and be healthy, the way that the language is one-sided. So thank you for reconsidering the language.
Thank you. Next up, we have Manya Tam in opposition.
Aloha, Honorable Chair Tam, Vice Chair Martinez, members of the committee. I first need to state that I am testifying as a private citizen and that I have taken a formal break in order to testify here. As Vice Chair of the JCRB, I am in opposition to SCR 13. I support an end to the war in Gaza and peace and dignity for both Palestinians and Israelis, but calling for a ceasefire without calling for the genocidal terrorist organization Hamas to be removed from power is not the way to end the cycle of violence that plagues Israel and Palestine. I was born and raised here in Oahu, and I have personally experienced and seen harassment and antisemitism against myself and also against my community increase astronomically after October 7, including my friend being physically assaulted and graffiti and swastikas being painted on public property where children drive by or are driven by. I personally was called a baby killer and a dirty Jew. This resolution gives legitimacy to those, the language of this resolution gives legitimacy to those who harass my family and friends, and passing it may stop your offices from being called and harassed, but it won't stop the never-ending assaults on Jews in Hawaii from those who call for a ceasefire only to chant the genocidal phrase "From the river to the sea," which was heard here yesterday. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Melissa Bowman.
Aloha. I'm testifying in strong support of Resolution SCR 13. We've all seen the devastating footage pouring out of Gaza. We've seen fathers and mothers hugging the dead bodies of their children. We've seen children orphaned, covered in burns, missing limbs, and starving to death while food just miles away is blocked from entry. We've seen testimonies of sexual violence and dozens of men tortured, humiliated, and executed. This is not self-defense. This is a crime against humanity committed with the aid and support of our government officials and tax dollars. This is unacceptable. A ceasefire is also the only, the best way to ensure the release of the hostages. In November, when a ceasefire was reached, we saw the release of over 100 hostages, while the ongoing hostilities have killed more hostages than they have released. When we look at atrocities committed throughout history, we often think, how did we let this happen? As history repeats itself, I see that it was because the people who had the power to stop it did not. Now you have the power to advocate for an end to this. Please use your voice to do what's right and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Next up, we have Mariko Whiteknapp. Support. We have Anastasia Narajoz. In support. Sorry, I'm like, not good at pronouncing names. Catherine Bradford in Jennifer here. Next up, we have Barbara Altimus. Testifying in support. We have Ayman Abdul Ghani. Sorry if I mispronounce your name.
Good morning, Chair and committee members. I'm representing actually the Muslim Association of Hawaii, and I put my own testament as well, so I hope I have one more minute extra for two entities. My name is Dr. Ayman Abdul Ghani. I'm a cardiothoracic surgeon who has been living and serving in the state of Hawaii for a bit more than 17 years. I'm here to present the Muslim Association of Hawaii and 4,500 individuals in the Muslim community in Hawaii. I have also submitted my own statement as a member of the Palestinian-American Medical Association, who just returned from a two-week medical mission to Gaza arranged in collaboration with the World Health Organization, and I will summarize our testimonies for both. 10 days ago, I was there. I was in the European Hospital in Gaza in Khan Yunis at the borders of Rafah. This is currently the most functioning hospital in Gaza, and when I say most functioning, I mean it's not out of service yet and can provide some care beyond first aid. To put you in perspective, Gaza is equivalent to the size of the island of Lanai, with a population of a little more than 2 million. Per square foot, it is the most densely populated area on the planet where people have been living for many years in open-air prison. 10 days ago, I could smell the gunpowder in the air, the sewage in between makeshift shelters inside the hospital, and the smell of death. My ears are still buzzing from the drones circulating the smoky skies of Gaza. I was working side by side with two American surgeons, Dr. Mark Birlmater, an orthopedic surgeon who happens to be a Jew himself, and Dr. Farouk Sidwa, a trauma surgeon. These two esteemed colleagues were present at Ground Zero on 9/11, Hurricane Katrina, the Boston Marathon bombing, and the 2010 earthquake in Haiti on the first day of these disasters. They have worked in the deprivation of southern Zimbabwe and the horrors of the war in Ukraine. Together, they have worked on more than 40 surgical missions in developing countries on three continents, and in their combined 57 years of volunteering, they have never witnessed anything like what they saw in Gaza. We've experienced the pain of being unable to treat a child who will slowly die, but also because she is the only surviving member of an entire family, we have not the heart to tell these children how they died. I'm gonna wrap up. I was there when the world's Central Kitchen volunteers were killed by the Israeli drones in their three-car convoy, and we felt really bad and also threatened that we could be next. And we were happy that the world woke up, but only a few days later. Everything went back to business as usual. In conclusion, I implore for an immediate ceasefire and ending the siege on Gaza. The government of Israel must cease unlawful attacks on civilians. What's worse, it's our tax money being used in funding this. This phone has hundreds of pictures and video clips that I took personally, and I can show it to you if you want individually, and some of it will make your jaw drop. I respectfully urge your esteemed committee to consider this measure with utmost compassion and urgency, recognizing its potential to contribute to peace and justice in the region. Thank you.
Next up, we have Jordan May. We're gonna move on to Zoom now.
May I testify? I'm sorry, I was late. I'm Laura Hughes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. It's on my phone. I'm testifying as a private citizen. Good morning, respected committee members. It is both an honor and a privilege to be in this room today. I would like to first start by stating my unwavering support for Palestine and oppressed persons all over the world. Now more than ever, it is crucial that Hawaii advocate for the lives of Palestinians. I would like to share a little bit about my experience as a grassroots organizer. To begin, it is necessary to state that the regions where I organize are heavily influenced by the Italian far-right, and to speak out against the government is to risk one's own safety. Given the current situation on the ground in Gaza and the West Bank, it has been incredibly difficult to deliver any aid that has been gathered. I currently maintain a collection point at my place of work, and as such, have had the opportunity to raise awareness and generate support for the people in Palestine. I'd like to highlight that it is important for me to explain to every single individual that does donate the grim fact that though their aid will reach the border, it may not make it inside due to heavy Israeli restrictions on what types of aid may pass. Furthermore, if the aid does make it through Israel, and I quote from a colleague and a fellow grassroots organizer...
Please wrap up your testimony.
Yes, please. I just have one more sentence. I translated this quote from Italian to English because it was given to me in Italian, so I apologize. It may not actually make it to persons deserving and needing of this aid because they have actually lost drivers in bombings by Israelis in Gaza. This is an unspeakable crime against humanity, and I implore that committee members, please approve without further hesitation, Resolution SCR 13. Thank you so much.
Next up, we're gonna move to Zoom. We have on Zoom, Our Revolution Hawaii in support.
Aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Dave Monix, I represent Our Revolution Hawaii and our 5,000 members statewide. We stand in strong support of this ceasefire resolution. You represent us, and our congressional representatives represent us, and the majority of people in the United States, over 70%, support a ceasefire, as well as 57% of the Jewish community supports the ceasefire. And a huge growing movement within Israel is supporting a ceasefire. There are many groups working with the Jews and Arabs in... There are many groups working with Jews and Arabs in Israel, standing together, as well as Jewish Voice for Peace, they're all calling for a ceasefire. This is a stain on the American name, as was Meili. It shocked the nation, and the best thing to do is call for a ceasefire to end the violence, and it doesn't matter where people stand, you just stop fighting and then you negotiate a settlement. So, we're all gonna remember what happens here today, and I appreciate so much that you're hearing this resolution, and please stand together for peace and justice and end this violence, letting the president know that the people of Hawaii do not support an ongoing battle there, we need a ceasefire. It's our taxpayers paying for it, our tax money, and if Biden says to Netanyahu to stop, he will have to stop. We're the ones supplying the weapons. Thank you so much for hearing this resolution. All my best to you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jewish Voice for Peace Hawaii, Julie Orich.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. Well, no, we can't hear you, actually.
You can't hear me?
Very faint.
Okay, is this any better?
That's better.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the entire committee for hearing this resolution today. My name is Julie. I'm testifying on behalf of Jewish Voice for Peace in strong support of this resolution with no amendments. We are currently, me and another co-organizer are currently calling in from Molokati, where we are supporting Bahar, who has a 24-month-year-old and a six-month-year-old whose husband currently is putting his life on the line to join the Freedom Movement, the flotilla, that a series of boats that's going with and right another Hawaii resident to attempt to break the siege. People here in this community are putting their lives at risk. I just wanna talk about our community that has brought this to your door today, who has been showing up for six months. This community that has come together is so beautiful and amazing, the way that we are supporting each other, grieving together, processing our anger. It's Jews and Muslims and Arabs and the Black folks and indigenous folks and Hawaiian folks all together supporting each other because we believe in all humanity, we believe in the sacredness of life and land, and that is who this group is here today. There is no hate in any of us, in any of our hearts. And I just wanna say, as a Jewish person in Hawaii, I have not received any antisemitism in being out front as an organizer in all of this, and so I just wanna say that we are here in strong support, we stand on our written testimony, and I'm just asking you all to just put a little bit of something on the line to stand with us here. There are so many people, there are so many things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Daniela Escontrella in support.
Hello, my name is Daniela Escontrella, and I'm testifying in strong support of SCR 13. Over the past six months, we have witnessed the mass murder of over 35,000 people, with 14,000 of those casualties being children. I've seen the most horrific scenes I've ever seen in my life, including decapitated children, mothers identifying their children from sheds of hair or limbs, and doctors having to amputate their kids' limbs without anesthesia. Most recently, starving Palestinians were gone down while trying to acquire critical needed supplies such as food and water, and Al Shifa Hospital became yet another graveyard in Gaza. Over 2/3 of American people do not want their taxpayer dollars to fund this genocide. We could serve as an example to the rest of the country that we stand for peace and against genocide. Given Hawaii's history and the similarities it shares with Palestine, it is only appropriate that we stand with the people of Palestine and demand an end to this genocide. Thank you for hearing the resolution, and please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Isra Levinson.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Rick Collins in support.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Doug Matuoka in support.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Jonathan Simons in support.
Hi. My name is Jonathan Simons. I'm calling in from Kohala in strong support of SCR 13. Thank you for hearing this bill, but we need to pass this bill right now. We need to get it out of the committee, we need to get it on the floor. This bill is already too late. There are so many children and people continue to suffer under this apartheid state, under the genocide, and every day we continue to face greater and greater death tolls. This is the kind of resolution that I would have hoped we could have introduced, heard, and passed at the beginning of the session rather than pushing it until the end, but here we are. We need to stop it now, and we can't continue to wait as every day more and more, more and more people are suffering. So, thank you for your time, thank you for hearing the resolution. I strongly, strongly support passing this resolution as is without amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jessica Nakamura in support.
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I urge the committee to pass SCR 13 unamended. The estimated death toll of 14,000 children in Gaza is likely underreported because Israel has targeted doctors and healthcare workers and journalists. Over the past six months, we have witnessed the most well-documented war crimes in history. Netanyahu has rejected release of the hostages in exchange for a permanent ceasefire multiple times, but we needed a ceasefire when there were 100 child victims, 1,000 child victims, 10,000 child victims. We must be willing to say as an entire human community that this is wrong and this senseless violence has to end. I have been shocked to hear attempted justifications for the violent deaths of Palestinian civilians. There is no justification and there is no reason for another Palestinian child to die by bombs, snipers, and starvation. We need a permanent and immediate ceasefire now, and we need long overdue justice for the Palestinian people. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have Donovan Kama Kani Albano in support.
Hello, Mike Hocko. My name is Donovan Kama Kani, Michael Albono. I'm a Kanaka Uyvi from the island of Oahu. I stand on my individual testimony as a citizen in strong support of SCR 13. It has been 195 days where nearly 34,000 Palestinians have been martyred since the start of the current US-backed genocidal campaign by the settler colonial project of Israel and 75 years of a continued ethnic cleansing and colonial displacement, this possession and elimination in occupied Palestine. As a non-binary queer Native person under duress of illegal occupation and the native lands, waters, and skies of whom I am a descendant of continue to be subjected to the violence of imperialism and militarism, I do not stand for the horrific violence endured on the lands, waters, and skies of Palestine and its native peoples backed by my occupiers. I am haunted by the words of a queer Palestinian who said, "I wish I could watch the sunset over the Gaza Sea with you. For one night, I wish this occupation was no longer and that we could be free for once on our land." The topography of Gaza has literally shifted. The night is filled with bombs and drones. There are weeps of Palestinian children, mothers, fathers, daughters, sons, and families from across the seas and ocean that ultimately connect to the Pacific. I hope that in your kulianna that you will listen to the people and demand a permanent and lasting ceasefire now. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next up, we have Avalon Parada.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Jeanette Quaballui.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Imani Altimus Williams.
Aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Aloha, I urge you to pass this resolution without amendments. I am a Jewish woman of color who grew up here in Hawaii, and as a descendant of peoples who have survived genocides, forced displacement, and enslavement, I recognize that I would not be alive speaking with you all today had it not been for the courage of not just my own ancestors, but also the many people, whether directly impacted or not, who helped to fight for their survival. So, I feel a strong responsibility to do everything in my power to ensure that no genocides happen ever again to anyone, and I don't just feel this way because I'm a Jew, or because I'm a Black woman, or because I was raised in another occupied place that needs the support of the world in fighting for land back, but because I am a human being like each of you on this committee who has the power to empathize with other human beings who desperately need and deserve the right to be alive today, just like all of us. We are all responsible, but especially all of you who represent us. There's nothing complicated about demanding an end to genocide, and so I please, please urge you all to do what you know in your hearts is the right thing to do and to pass this resolution without amendments. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next up, we have Wallace Enberg in support.
Not present.
Present. Next up, we have Tamar Schmidt in support.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Kencho Gurong in support.
Aloha. Please pass this resolution unamended. I could take this minute to recount any of the tens of thousands of horror stories from Gazans over the past six months or of the occupation and apartheid of the last 75 years, but I'm gonna assume that you have also been witness to this genocide being livestreamed to us for the past six months and as legislators have taken the time to educate yourselves. I don't believe anything I say during this one minute will move you if the past six months have not. Instead, I am here to tell you that this genocide and occupation has activated your constituents in a momentous way. We are in every single house district across Hawaii with regular demonstrations across at least five islands. We are a diverse coalition. Many of us are Kanaka, Jewish, and BIPOC. Many of us are seasoned activists, however, many of us are also new voters mobilized by an issue we see our governments, both federal and local, as contributing to with our tax dollars. We have been calling and writing to your offices, as I'm sure you know, and we're only just getting started. We don't want this blood on our hands. Please pass this unamended. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Nikhil Kurana.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Shannon Rudolph in support. Okay, we'll just go back to her. Next up, we have Keiko Kialoha.
Hi, aloha, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, aloha, Kialoha, my name is Keiko Kialoha, and I am here to support this resolution strongly. As a taxpayer, and I realize that the ceasefire is primarily the responsibility of the federal government, but I have tried to contact our federal delegation, and they have only sent me cookie cutter responses to many of the concerns that I have raised. And so I turn to you, to you, our Hawaii legislature, to please help us elevate our voice, but I wanna touch on, I heard somebody talking about aloha, and it struck me because here in the islands, we talk about the importance of perpetuating our culture and a commitment to our culture, and as Kanaka Uyvi, I feel it's very important that we do focus on that, especially aloha. And if we think about anti-Pilahi Paki, who said, "When the world will turn to Hawaii as they search for world peace because Hawaii has the key," and that key is aloha. And aloha depends on the balance of akua, kupuna, and aina, right? Land, our ancestry, and our gods, and all of those bonds are being severed among the Palestinian people in a very systematic way by an imperial government in much the same manner that it has happened here in Hawaii. And so if we are truly committed to our values, especially aloha, we must support a ceasefire, a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Mahalo.
Next up, we have Kristen Young.
Aloha, committee members. Firstly, thank you for hearing this resolution. People have pushed hard for this because it matters what we do in the face of an ongoing genocide. I am not Jewish, but I have it confirmed from Jewish voices that apartheid, genocide, ethnic cleansing are not Jewish values. A ceasefire will benefit all sides, and saying it is antisemitic wrongly implies that mass murder is a Jewish value, and that is what is antisemitic. As a person of faith, I believe that we are all children of God, so I see Palestinians as my neighbors and their struggle as my own. Though Gaza is far away and this issue may seem beyond us here in Hawaii, we cannot separate ourselves from what is happening, especially when our tax dollars are being used to fund this genocide and when Israeli forces are allowed to train in our waters during brim pack. There are a number of ways that we are implicated, but we don't have to be complicit. Now that this resolution is before you, I ask you to please use your institutional power to represent your constituents and pass SCR 13 unamended. I hope that you will not stand in the way of this resolution, but rather stand for life and humanity, peace and justice, using every available opportunity to affirm Palestinians' right to live. Please vote yes on SCR 13. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back and see if Shannon Rudolph got her mic set up. She ready? Okay, we're just gonna move on. Next up, we have Peggy.
Can you hear me?
Okay, Shannon, go ahead. You can start now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. You can hear me.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Shannon Rudolph. I'm asking you to pass SCR 13, no amendments. I'm sick and tired and sick to my soul. All the wars finance and kill millions and nearly my entire life. I'm also sick that our economy depends on perpetual war and the number one as the first exporter, killing many, and I'm ashamed. Showing that many places have longstanding conflicts that are the encouragement of others, and that lives a sad state.
And I think we can't really hear you. It's breaking up on your end. We do have your written testimony also. Next up, we have Peggy Hong.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having this hearing. I'm calling in from Waimea Nalo today. So, in addition to everything that everybody has already pointed out, and by the way, I am calling in in support of the bill, and we want to pass, we would like for you to pass this important resolution unamended, and especially as residents of Hawaii, we must lend our voice to the international outcry against this genocide in Gaza. We need to set an example for the generations to come and land on the right side of history. We have to connect the dots between the illegal overthrow of the Hawaiian Kingdom and the colonization of Palestine and recognize that we have the same history, common history. And as people who've experienced illegal occupation and takeover, we must do for Palestine what we wanted the world to do on our behalf as people of Hawaii. I'm not Kanaka, but it's my duty to support the rights of Kanaka, and I'm not Palestinian, but it's my duty to speak out in support of Palestinian sovereignty. The first step is permanent ceasefire. We're on the other side of the world from Palestine, but we are funding this genocide. We boast of being the bluest, most progressive state in the USA, so we must lead the way in passing a ceasefire bill. And one last thought is.
All right, please wrap up.
In terms of safety, I'm concerned about safety of both Jews and Muslims. The only way to ensure safety is ceasefire, permanent ceasefire right now.
Thank you. Next up, we have Catherine Rothman.
Aloha, members of the committee. As a Jewish person, I am testifying in strong support of SCR 13 being passed unamended. Hawaii must stand up for what is right and demand that our federal officials take every action possible to stop the flow of violence and suffering in Gaza. The United States cannot continue to support a government which violates international laws, utilizes starvation as a weapon of war, prevents the flow of aid, and places Palestinian men, women, and children in situations of unimaginable suffering. The situation becomes more dire the longer violence continues, and life-giving aid is so insufficient for the mounting humanitarian needs. A ceasefire will allow for aid to enter, violence to stop, Israeli hostages to return home, and conversations to begin about dismantling the apartheid system imposed on Palestinians in Israel. As we approach the Jewish holiday of Passover next week, let it be a reminder that Judaism values standing up to oppression in all of its forms and that everything possible must be done to stop the genocide of the Palestinian people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Elizabeth Collins.
Not present.
Next up, we have Daria Friend.
Can you hear me? Trying to start my video.
We can hear you.
Okay. So, I wanted to thank the committee, first of all, for hearing this resolution, and I wanted to thank you because I know that for many people, this seemed to be not very relevant to someplace so far away from Gaza, but I did wanna say that, as everybody else has pointed out, that this is about humanity and justice and freedom. else has pointed out, that this is about humanity and justice and freedom, and the problems that we would encounter if you were to vote no on this resolution would be numerous. So I am in very strong favor of passing this resolution without amendments. Just pointing out that a no would mean, first of all, not paying attention to these mass of constituents that are here today, and nationally, on a national level, demanding that this kind of violence stop permanently and diplomacy start to reign. And I just wanted to point out finally that the International Court of Justice has said that this is a plausible genocide. We don't want to vote for continuing that as the United States, and aiding and abetting that as a Jewish person, I think that makes us a lot more unsafe.
Please wrap up your testimony.
As we perpetuate a genocide. So please vote for this resolution unequivocally. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kelsey Mapa in support.
Not present.
Not present. Next up, we have Valerie Okra in support.
Not present.
Next up, we have Kathleen Flanders in support.
Aloha. Mahalo. I'm calling from Honolulu, and I'm here to testify in support of SRC thirteen, and in doing so, remind you that genocide is the gravest of crimes under international law, and that the United States has a duty under Article One of the 1948 Geneva Convention to prevent its acts. I'm quoting from the Center of Constitutional Rights, "That whether a state has breached its duty to prevent genocide depends on a state's ability to effectively influence the actions of the people likely to commit or already committing genocide." The United States has tremendous influence on the actions of the Israeli government, and every US citizen, including you and up to the president, can be held responsible for their role in furthering genocide. As representatives of the people of these Hawaiian islands, to not call for an immediate and permanent ceasefire will not only cause you to be complicit, but will also burden our citizenry, whom you represent, with a horrific, unconscionable crime of complicity in the genocide of the indigenous Palestinian people by the colonial apartheid state of Israel. This is a burden of conscience and heart that shall not.
Thank you. Please wrap up your testimony.
Who already wear the scars of colonial theft and oppression. Honorable senators, I want you to understand that these laws were put into place, the international laws have been put into place to protect the rights of children to live free of fear, of pain, and suffering. These laws were put into place following the genocide.
Please wrap up your testimony. Your one minute is up.
Holocaust. Mahalo. Thank you for representing the people of Hawaii.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lathis Inari. Lathis, sorry. Inari.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. Dr. Nunnin here at Hawaii Kai, testifying as a private citizen. As citizens of Hawaii, we must stand on the aloha side of history, no matter the outcome. Your grandchildren will learn about this. What do you want them to learn about what you did for the oppressed, for the indigenous? We must stand on the aloha side of history. Just the other day, a playground was targeted. A playground. Twenty children died just like that, at a playground. I saw a body of a pregnant woman flattened and ran over. I saw burnt babies in the NICUs with just their arms and their bracelets left. Unfortunately, at this level, there is no sides. The situation has evolved to be more objective than ever before, and it strongly urges to be on the right side of history. Mahalo Nui for holding space today. Please, I beg it you, do not forget about the children, and pass this resolution unamended. Mahalo.
Thank you. That is all that we have signed up to testify on Zoom. Is there anyone on Zoom that hasn't testified yet that wishes to testify?
Hello?
Uh, yes.
Would it be, my name was called earlier, but I am signed up to testify.
Okay, go ahead.
Cool. My name's Nikhil Kurana, and I'm in strong support of SCR thirteen to be passed immediately and unamended. The resolution is simple. It's just asking for a ceasefire and ending to the killing of over thirty-two thousand Palestinians. Our representatives, Congress, the Senate, President Biden, including your guys' representatives, are insisting on sending military aid, weapons, and support to the bombing of Gaza and innocent civilians. But meanwhile, the American public has largely supported ceasefire with over sixty-six percent of people in a poll that was conducted a few months ago. So really, this is just a question of humanity and democracy. I want the US to stop aiding and abetting the bombing of children, and I think the majority of people do as well. So I hope that you all can follow the will of the people and pass this resolution to people who you work for. So sincerely, that is, that's my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on Zoom first?
I would like to.
Okay. Please state your name and whether you're in support or opposition or with comments.
My name is Ruth Kulei, and I stand in strong support of SCR thirteen without amendments. There will come a time when those of us who pay taxes to the United States government, making us complicit in what they do with this money, will have to answer for what we did and did not do while our government enabled the genocide of Palestinians. I want to be able to say I did everything I could, but as an individual, my power is limited. Perhaps the most significant thing I will do is what I'm doing right now, giving testimony to my legislative representatives. I'm asking this committee to exercise their power and give Hawaii's testimony to Congress and the president, to say that the United States, that Hawaii calls for a ceasefire to end the death and suffering in Gaza. I have heard members and leaders of the legislature invoke aloha as the reason for all sorts of actions. Would people who live in aloha fail to call for the ceasing of fire of munitions upon an already devastated community of people? I ask you to please pass this resolution.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that wishes to testify?
Uh, I'd like to testify. Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Please state your name and whether your position on the bill.
Uh, name, Nathan Abril. Strong support, unamended. It's famous hearing takes place the day after the United States once again rejected Palestinian statehood at the UN, and Israel has once again illegally attacked Iran, risking a potential regional war in the Middle East. I'm getting real sick of hearing Israel has a right to defend itself when Israel has done nothing to actually defend itself. Tell me, how is murdering children self-defense? How is killing journalists self-defense? How is bombing an IVF clinic housing four thousand embryos for parents that cannot conceive self-defense? These are not actions not based on self-defense, but genocide and ethnic cleansing. Israel is committing a genocide. We must urge our reps and senators in DC to end it. You must urge them not to send fourteen billion to support a genocide, but send fourteen billion to the victims of the Ha'ina, who our government has neglected. Even under US law, there are limits to self-defense, and murdering a family is not self-defense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify?
Hello, aloha.
Go ahead.
My name is Jordan Kapono Nakamura. I'm testifying as a private citizen and a Kamai worker. And I'm in strong support of SCR thirteen. I just wanted to say, in addition to all of the humanitarian rationale that has been put forth, which I think makes this very clear, that the right decision is to pass a ceasefire at the bare minimum, there has been a lot of talk about what does this have to do with Hawaii. As a Japanese-American, I want to say that, you know, Pearl Harbor, which was a threat to everyone's security in these islands, would not have happened if there was not an association of this place with the warmongering US empire. And as Biden and the US continues to push for escalation in this regional war, we want to make a stand as a matter of security that we are against this genocide that most of the world is against. And in addition, the thirteen million of funding that is being sent does apparently have something to do with us. And I am in agreement with the statements made, that that belongs to the people of Hawaii, such as the Lion Residents. Mahalo, and please pass this unamended. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom wishing to testify? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to members in the audience. Is there anyone wishing to testify? Go ahead.
Good morning, committee members. My name, you guys know, is Cameron Hurt, but allow me to say my full name today. Kimeron Musa Abu Yusef Rasongli Wahrhurt. I'm a proud Sufi Muslim. I'm here today to urge you guys, on my own capacity as a citizen, to please vote in favor of this resolution. You've heard so many compelling stories about why you should vote yes for this from a humanistic standpoint, from a survival standpoint. I want to make it clear about politics and policy, because that's my bread and butter. Politically, you have the right to do this. Politically, this isn't something that has never been done by representative bodies at the state level. You have a job to keep us safe. The world is not safe. Saying that the world is more safe today after October seventh, saying that is equating Bibi keeping Jews safe as Hamas keeping Muslims safe. Neither side is doing that. They're both killing. If forty Israeli babies that were beheaded is worth the price of a genocide, then what is the price for four hundred beheaded babies by Israeli and US bombs? We just, I'll say this to wrap up, we just celebrated Ramadan, and at the end of Ramadan, we celebrated Eid al-Fitr. I sat, I celebrated, I ate food with my son. My son's twenty-three. I went bowling with him. And I thought about a Palestinian doctor who got his family from Gaza in the north, the Kanzianis Tarafa, only to have to bury his son. I saw a man kiss the feet of his son in the most holy of months.
Please wrap up your testimony.
For a war that he did not want. What you do matters. What you do from here, we will remember. And there's a lot of young people mobilized by this. Please do what's right. Thank you.
Uh, next, go ahead.
Aloha. Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support. So as a Chinese, you know, we have had strong contact with traveling Jewish people since the Jewish merchants, since the eighth century. And the first Jewish settlers arrived through the Silk Road during the Song Dynasty. So I love the Jewish culture, shalom, and we should enact this resolution. This policy will set a standard about war, and as we witness violence in Gaza and around the world, it is time to mourn the loss of death, the loss of life, actually, in war. So death came days after food and supplies started getting dropped along Gaza's coastlines in response to the humanitarian crisis amid the ongoing Israel Hamas war. War is traumatic, and because it often involves violence, including witnessing direct combat, viewing the enemy getting harmed and watching friends and comrades pass away. War injures and disables the ones fighting to protect our nation and our community. It also debilitates mental health, illnesses, disorders, and can lead to moral injury. And it distorts the truth. It promotes prejudices and stereotypes about the ones considered enemy, and often portrays the enemy as less than human, legitimizing the use of violence. War reduces moral categories to the simple binary of we are good, they are evil. Nuanced public discussions become increasingly difficult.
Angela, please wrap up your testimony.
And sometimes impossible. And in this civil society, we should use our words. There is no reason for war. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Go ahead. Please state your name and your position on the bill.
Yeah. Hi there. My name is Sam Peck, strongly in support of SCR thirteen. Aloha to the chair, vice chair, and members of the committee. Thank you for hearing this measure. I'm here today testifying on behalf of students and faculty for justice in Palestine at the University of Hawaii. My name is Sam Peck, and on behalf of SFJPUH, I am testifying in support of SCR thirteen. In 2014, SFJP protested Israel's bombing of Gaza. That summer, as part of a practice that Israel calls mowing the grass, Israel killed over two thousand and two hundred Palestinians. This past summer, SFJPUH hosted a young artist, Malak Matar, who at age twenty-three had already experienced four such bombing campaigns, all funded by the US, all funded by the US. Israel's war on the people of Palestine, which predates Hamas, is part of an ongoing Nakba or catastrophe that, is part of an ongoing Nakba catastrophe that with the founding of Israel in 1948 displaced over seven hundred thousand Palestinians and destroyed over four hundred villages. Only this morning, I read of a new technology, a new technology, Israeli drones that produce the sounds of crying children in order to lure out and shoot Palestinians. This is the terrorism that we as US taxpayers are funding. Are you okay with this? Your constituents has made clear their support for the resolution with over twenty thousand emails, fourteen hundred phone calls. Please vote yes to an unamended SCR thirteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Just can form a line, too, if you guys want to.
Hi, my, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Abdolgani. I'm representing only myself in support of this bill unamended. I'm a medical student and daughter of Dr. Eamon Abdolgani. I have never been involved in legislation, and I never thought that I would. But after seeing this country's reaction to what we're all seeing, I am beginning to lose hope. When my dad was in Gaza, I believed if something were to happen to him, we wouldn't do anything about it. And I'm here because I don't want to lose hope in our elected representative. So I ask for you all to support this bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up.
Hi, my name is Kristi Chun. I don't have anything prepared, but I don't have any particular connection to Gaza. I'm just an everyday, average citizen. I'm a mom, I'm a wife, a homeowner, a taxpayer, and I just paid seventy thousand dollars in taxes. And Congress is trying to pass twenty-six billion dollars of our tax money for this, and I'm just deeply against it. And I'm here to hopefully give you guys courage to do the right thing. Everyday people like me support you in supporting this bill for a permanent immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Bradford, and I am in support of the bill unamended. And I'm just going to keep it short. There's a right side of history now, and we all have the opportunity to stand up together and pass this, and really show that Hawaii is going to lead the way in our country to ending the violence in Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aloha, representatives. My name is Fatima, and I am in strong support with no amendments. I can see the future, and I've been a medium for over fifteen years professionally and my whole life. I dream of a world where my sister doesn't call me from Ramallah, telling me that IDF has just shot three kids outside of her window. I dream of a world where my cousin doesn't have to flee from her university back to Jerusalem because of the bombs. I dream of a world where my dad can touch the ocean, thirty minutes away from his house, without having to be arrested or shot at. I dream of a world where Hawaii makes a difference and separates themselves from the rest of the United States by taking a stand against this kind of violence. I dream of a world where we don't have to watch on social media a woman being raped at a hospital, a pregnant woman with her family forced to watch, and then murdered. I dream of a world where people can deliver aid without being executed. Wouldn't that be the world that you want yourself and your children and your families to live in? One of those kids being shot outside of your window, or your own, your nieces, your nephews. You think Hawaii is so separate from that, but what happens if we go to war and we're on the wrong side? Does Hawaii want to be part of that? You are not the United States. You don't have to be. Show up for your people. Show up and stand up for what's right. We are all indigenous here. We all have some connection to land. Why can't you see the connection? This is why everyone is here. This is why you have so many phone calls. It is heartbreaking. And you are the people in front of us. You sign up for this job. You can do something. Do you want to go down in history, being a group of people that sat by and let this happen? This will be in the history books for our future generations. What side are you on? Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Hakim Ansafi, as an individual, the reason I'm testifying as an individual, we ask, as the chairman of the Muslim Association, we ask our community not to show up, as forty-five hundred of us, it'll probably be done by the end of tonight, but also because it's emotional. A lot of people have lost their loved ones. But I felt compelled to say just a couple of words, because to hear an opposition because someone is feeling uncomfortable in this beautiful state, allowing the bombs to continue to kill and massacre the people, it's amazing that here in Hawaii we'll have anybody to be able to oppose this because they feel uncomfortable because they've been called names. While there is an increase in antisemitism, there is even more increase in Islamophobia. In fact, people were killed as Muslims. But this does not justify. It is precisely because of this reason that we have to call for a ceasefire, so these tragedies can end, so these pictures that are coming up can end. So I urge the respect members of this committee to pass this resolution unamended, which simply say, stop the bombing, stop the killing, allow food, medicine to those in need. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Seeing none. Members, any questions? Seeing none. We're gonna do a short recess. Seeing none, we're going to do a short recess. Reconvening this morning's agenda for the Committee on Culture, Arts, and International Affairs. Today is Friday, April 19, 2024, here in Conference Room 430. Time is 10:00 AM. We've heard a lot of testimony, and we really appreciate everyone that has come out here on an issue that, you know, has really touched us all. So having worked with the committee as well as the House, our recommendation is to pass this out with an HD1. The Chair's recommendation is that we amend the title to say, urging the members of Hawaii's congressional delegation and the Biden administration to call for an immediate, permanent bilateral ceasefire in Gaza, the return of all hostages, and to continue negotiations for lasting peace in the region. The resolution will be amended to reflect just that. We will also amend the resolution to include language acknowledging the events surrounding October 7, 2023, and we'll be taking out the part of the resolution that says that we'll be sending it to the DNC and the RNC, because that's political. Members, any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment.
Go ahead, Rep. Capella.
I just want to take a moment to thank every single member who, of the public, that came and testified today, that have been sending emails, that have been calling, and have been trying to educate, I think, both the House and the Senate on this really important issue. As a new mom, some of the, many of the things that you share are horrifying. And I think that it's outrageous for anyone to not support something like this. I understand that the amendments were made to try and move it through the rest of the House. There are parts of me that really want to see an unamended resolution. But Chair, I will be supporting you in voting in full with no reservations. But I do want to thank every single person that came out and testified. You're the reason that this resolution was heard.
Thank you. Members, any other questions or comments?
I'm on the vote.
Okay. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SCR 13. Chair and Vice Chairs voting, passing with amendment. Rep. Garrett.
Aye.
Rep. Capella.
Aye.
Rep. Matayoshi.
Aye.
Rep. Sayama.
Aye.
Rep. Alkas.
No.
Okay, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.